AV and Clerk. Can a Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Nani.
Present.
Mr. Player.
Here.
Galore.
Here.
Tonti. Ms. O'Shea. Ms. Fahy. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hawey. Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Ms. Robson.
Thank you. Can you please stand with me and say to pledge allegiance and then remain for a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'd like to thank all those who've been patient with our process today, our late start-time handling council business. So we'd like to thank all those who have stayed with us and are here today. And so can a Clerk please call the first speaker for public comment?
Alicia Barazza and Doug Van Zant.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Barazza and this is my husband Doug Van Zant. And we live in the Ten Brook Triangle neighborhood here in Albany. I came to talk to the council members today regarding the resolution to adopt prosecutorial misconduct. And I just wanted to start off by saying that according to the 2008 American Bar Association's standards on prosecutorial investigations, the prosecutor's client is the public, it says. These are the exact words. The client is the public, not particular government agencies or victims. And their primary duty is to seek justice. And I would say that that absolutely did not happen in our son's case. Because our son was charged as a seventeen-year-old. He had no criminal record. He was charged with arson. He was treated an adult when he could have been treated as a juvenile. He was denied youthful offender status even though he qualified and it was recommended by the pre-sentence investigation report. The sole cause of his crime was a mental illness and yet it was completely ignored by the district attorney. And to this day, he says that he does not think our son was mentally ill, even though we had three psychiatric evaluations and a very detailed mental health forensic evaluation done for the court, which was ignored. So I think that those are the things that probably need to change and also they need to be addressed. The public sometimes don't realize what happens and I think people need to know that. We also had a mental health advocate that we tried to help us along the way with our son's case. And the district attorney refused to meet with him and to talk to him about our son's case. And to this day, we have no idea why. So there may have been obviously some things that were going on in the background that we just were not privy to. And our son was given four to twelve years in state prison as an adult. And he was slapped with five hu- almost half a million dollars in restitution, which was payable to the insurance company. And our son, of course, was absolutely unprepared for adult prison and he was also mentally ill. And in almost four years that he spent in prison, he was sexually assaulted. He was coerced by gang members. He was threatened with his life by correctional officers for complaining about mistreatment. He was thrown into solitary confinement on trumped-up charges. And eventually, he ended up taking his own life at Fishkill Correctional Facility while in solitary confinement. And all of this, I think, could have been prevented if we had someone that would have looked toward rehabilitation, which our son certainly could have been rehabilitated, rather than just focusing on punitive punishment and not looking at alternatives. We don't even have a mental health court in Albany County.
Ma'am, I don't mean to stop you, but I forgot to announce, public comment period is five minutes. I don't know if your husband is going to speak.
Okay. I will let him say a few things.
You have two minutes left. I'm sorry, I should have announced it before.
Sorry. The mental illness that our son suffered was an onset of severe depression, which manifested itself in auditory hallucinations. We had no idea that anything like this was going on with our son. It was, our first indication was when the police came to our house to arrest him. And they coerced a confession out of him. He didn't know it was a confession. He was told that they were going to help him out. And from there, it just went downhill. I had served in the military as an officer. My wife, she works for the state. Our lives have been to make things better for others. And we had no idea how poorly we'd be treated by the court system and eventually by the prison system. Our son was not given any break whatsoever. The DA, he refused to look into, to wait for a psychological evaluation.
One minute left.
And he basically just did what is normally done at the DA levels. And he forced a plea bargain on us. And like Alicia said, to this day, he does not believe that our son had a mental illness. And it's a crime for the DA to make a medical decision, especially one that resulted in the death of our son. And this has to stop. And I sure hope that Albany recognizes this problem and supports this resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For our next speaker, I'd like to, once again, each speaker has five minutes to talk about what he or she wishes to speak about. The council members cannot comment at this time during public comment period. But if they wish to do so at a later date in the agenda, they will do so. So can a Clerk please call the next speaker?
Andrea Wilkerson.
Good evening, everyone. I support the resolution too because I was wrongfully arrested for trespassing at my own property place of business and assaulted by three white male officers in the city of Albany down on South Pearl. I'm the owner of Simply Fish and Jazz. And so, you know, David Sors, when I saw him like two, three days later, he was like, "Oh, I can't speak with you Andrea." And I was, they wanted me to cop a plea, but I did not. So here's where we are. It's five years that the city of Albany has been fighting me with a lawsuit. It took two and a half years. Judge Carter tossed those criminal charges out. And then I commenced a civil suit. Once I was on Long Street, like two years later, being threatened to be arrested again for trespassing because I was in a Long Street florist. And they did not want to refund my money. And she said, "Oh, my boyfriend is a police officer. Call the police." And sure enough, Albany PD, they come and they threatened to arrest me for trespassing on their property. So I commenced a civil suit. It's been five years now. Come the eighteenth, I got arrested November twelve of 2012. November 2012, the year that I lost my mom. We are currently in a civil suit. They threw out your criminal charges and the judge just granted me, dismiss your motion for summary judgment to toss my case out. So I'm scheduled to go to trial on June eighteenth in Utica. But I want to say to y'all, I don't understand how the city can waste taxpayer dollars and be so wrong and strong about police brutality on women and people of color within the city. We know they are killing the black males all over the universe. But you know what's being done with women when we're under the custody of police officer? We're being abused and assaulted. I have a torn rotator cuff. And you have this law firm, Steve Raphis, okay? What a waste of foul taxpayer dollars as he sits and play with his cuff links and brag about his family going skiing and whatnot. He's on your book. He classified my case as, "Oh, it's a nuisance to the city. It's worth five thousand dollars." Well, that's what the city sees, women being abused by your officers and people being wrongfully arrested as a frivolous case and a nuisance to the city that the value is five thousand dollars. In the meantime, you can hire his law firm, his father, and generation after generation, pour money into that family. Look at the merits of people's cases. Don't be so strong on wrong actions of your officers or charges that are trumped upon people that the DA sits here and want to enforce. It's unfair. Fortunately, some of us have money that we can fight. But what about people who don't have the money to endure lawsuits? What happened to me was wrong. I truly believe that I'm going to win my trial. I have a videotape that I will be bringing to each and every one of you because I'm at the point, like just like the guys at Starbucks and those students, I'm a retired high school guidance counselor who were marching across the stage for graduation. I'm ready to let my video go viral as y'all sit here and want to look for a new chief of police. Really, what happened to me was totally unfair. And I really think it's awful that David Sors would sit here and charge me on trespass and coercion, resisting an arrest.
You have one minute left.
Huh?
You have one minute left.
Okay. So I ask of you to please look into the brutality that's taking place on women and people of color within your city of Albany. And when you're wrong, stop wasting taxpayer dollars to fight when you're so wrong. Take that money and invest it and train your officers to be much more sensitive to the need of the people who they are servicing within their community. And a last note is, I'm about to put in the fifth or sixth cabaret license. I'm not attaching a check with it. I was told that the only people holding up my cabaret license is Albany PD. Well, isn't that something? I'm in litigation with Albany PD. It's retaliation. So I'm going to submit my application. I hope that you guys can get your departments to do a due process and have it completed within thirty days. In the meantime...
Time's up. Thank you, ma'am.
I will play music. I'm Ms. Rosa Parks of the Cabaret License and I'd appreciate it...
Thank you, ma'am.
If you tell your officers not to come and bother me.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the next speaker?
Alana Klein.
Good evening, everyone. You've seen your agenda, so my point of why I'm speaking on this tonight should be obvious. The following is a suicide note of Lila Alcorn, edited only for profanity. If you're reading this, it means I have committed suicide and obviously failed to delete this post from my queue. Please don't be sad. It's for the better. The life I would have lived isn't worth living in because I'm transgender. I could go into detail explaining why I feel that way, but this note is probably going to be lengthy enough as it is. To put it simply, I feel like a girl trapped in a boy's body. And I felt like that ever since I was four. I never knew there was a word for that feeling, nor was it possible for a boy to become a girl. So I never told anyone and I just continued to do traditionally boyish things. When I was fourteen, I learned what transgender meant and cried with happiness. After ten years of confusion, I finally understood who I was. I immediately told my mom and she reacted extremely negatively, telling me that I was just a phase, that I would never truly be a girl, that God doesn't make mistakes, that I am wrong. If you are reading this, parents, please don't do this to your kids. Even if you are Christian or against transgender people, don't ever say that to someone, especially your kid. That won't do anything but make them hate themselves. That's exactly what it did to me. My mom started taking me to a therapist, but only would take me to Christian therapists who were all very biased. So I never got, never actually got the therapy I needed to cure me of my depression. I only got more Christians telling me that I was selfish and wrong and that I should look to God for help. When I was sixteen, I realized that my parents would never come around and then I would have to wait until I was eighteen to start any sort of transitioning treatment, which absolutely broke my heart. The longer you wait, the harder it is to transition. I felt hopeless, that I was just going to look like a man in drag for the rest of my life. On my sixteenth birthday, when I didn't receive consent from my parents to start transitioning, I cried myself to sleep. I formed a sort of forget-you attitude towards my parents and came out as gay at school, thinking that maybe if I eased into coming out as trans, it would be less of a shock. Although the reaction from my friends was positive, my parents were pissed. They felt like I was attacking their image and that I was an embarrassment to them. They wanted me to be their perfect little straight Christian boy and that's obviously not what I wanted. So they took me out of public school, took away my laptop and phone, and forbid me from getting on any sort of social media, completely isolating me from my friends. This was probably the part of my life when I was most depressed and surprised I didn't kill myself. I was completely alone for five months, no friends, no support, no love, just my parents' disappointment and the cruelty of loneliness. At the end of the school year, my parents finally came around and gave me back my phone and let me back on social media. I was excited. I finally had my friends back. They were extremely excited to see me and talk to me, but only at first. Eventually, they realized they didn't really give a care about me and I felt even lonelier than I did before. The only friends I thought I had only liked me because they saw me five times a week. After a summer of having almost no friends, plus the weight of having to think about college, save money for moving out, keep my grades up, go to church every week and feel like trash because everyone there is against everything I live for, I've decided that I've had enough. I'm never going to transition successfully even when I move out. I'm never going to be happy with the way I look or sound. I'm never going to have enough friends to satisfy me. I'm never going to have enough love to satisfy me. I'm never going to find a man who loves me. I'm never going to be happy. Either I live the rest of my life as a lonely man who wishes he were a woman or I live my life as a lonelier woman who hates herself. There's no winning. There's no way out. I'm sad enough already. I don't need my life to get any worse. People say it gets better, but that isn't true in my case. It gets worse. Each day, I get worse. That's the gist of it. That's why I feel I kill myself. Sorry if that's not a good enough reason for you. It's good enough for me. As for my will, I want a hundred percent of the things that I legally own to be sold.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. And the money, plus the money in my bank, to be given to trans civil rights movements and support groups. I don't give a care which one. The only way I will rest in peace is if one day transgender people aren't treated the way I was. They're treated like humans with valid feelings and human rights. Gender needs to be taught about in schools. The earlier the better. My death needs to mean something. My death needs to be counted in the number of transgender people who commit suicide this year. I want someone to look at that number and say, "That's messed up" and fix it. Fix society, please. Goodbye. Lila Alcorn. At approximately 2:30 AM on December twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, Lila took a walk along Interstate seventy-one in Lebanon, Ohio, and stepped in front of a semitruck, ending her life. Please support the ordinance bringing conversion therapy. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the next speaker?
Ms. Nancy Benedict.
My name is Nancy Benedict. I live at Thirty-One Forest Road in Delmar. I have spoken many times before this common council regarding the fact that the TV studio channel Albany has been closed. We're on day number three hundred forty-one that it's closed. The last day that it was open was May thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Now, they have hired a person who was a coordinator to run the channel. I was told that the reason that, well, the first job he was supposed to do was inventory all the equipment that the TV station had. But it was around April eighteenth or nineteenth that he actually started working there. And it doesn't take that long to inventory the equipment that they have in that TV studio. It's been three weeks since he's been working. He is only part-time, but even so, I think he should have the equipment inventoried and I think the TV studio should be able to open soon. I also was very discouraged when I attended the PEG Oversight Committee meeting on April twelfth. There are eleven, there's supposed to be eleven members on the PEG Oversight Committee. Two of the seats are not filled. So there's nine members that are actually on the PEG Oversight Committee now. But the total number of members of the committee present at that meeting was three. Now, you have to have half of the number that you, half of the number that you're supposed to have on the board. There's two seats that aren't filled. But only, the quorum they were supposed to have was six and only three members of the PEG Oversight Committee showed up. So of course, they couldn't conduct any business. They had a meeting, but they couldn't conduct any business. And this isn't right because these people who are members of the PEG Oversight Committee are getting something that looks pretty good on their resume. Let's look at it that way. And yet, they aren't even showing up for the meetings some of the time and this is very bad. And also, you should know too that four of the members of the PEG Oversight Committee are appointed by the common council, but one of the two seats that's vacant is a common council seat. But none of the three members who were appointed by the common council were at that April twelfth meeting. And I think this is absolutely disgraceful that you have this board that isn't... A couple of years ago, there was a period of several months where they didn't have, I think they had, like out of six months, they had one month when they had a quorum. This was back when Joe Kniff was chairman of the PEG Oversight Committee. And that was terrible too. And then we, for a while, we had a time when people were at least showing up for the PEG Oversight Board meetings. But this meeting last, on April twelfth, made me feel very discouraged. And the next PEG Oversight Committee meeting is scheduled for May fourteenth, which is next Monday. And I think if a lot of people show up at the meeting, maybe they would be more apt to get the message that people are really interested and that they should be doing their job and coming to the PEG Oversight.
One minute remaining.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Clerk, please call the next speaker?
Simone Freeman.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. My name is Simone Freeman. This is my first time speaking before the common council and I consider it a privilege. I am here as a twenty-plus-year resident in the city of Albany and a proud homeowner in the Delaware Avenue community. I'm also here as a community health advocate and as a child advocate. And I'm here because I've been participating in a very critical issue that is on your discussion tonight for approval, specifically the authorization of alienation of a portion of Lincoln Park, Resolution Number Two Eight Five One One Eight R, as well as Resolution Two Nine Five One One Eight R, authorizing the council to allow alienation of a portion of Lincoln Park for the placement of a disinfection and floatable control facility, known otherwise as a Beaver Creek Clean River Project. I am here asking you, I'm not even really asking, I'm begging you in an attempt to plug into your moral conscience, to not approve this legislation. If you're not able to approve it, I'm at least asking for your consideration to table the matter because of its level of importance. For those of you, whether on the common council members or those in the audience, this project is about, it's a legislative mandate to clean up our environment from wastewater. I, along with the other folks that have been involved in this process and who've been outspoken, those of us who basically became aware of this project for the first time in about two weeks ago, the first part of April, we learned that this particular Big C project to be built in the Lincoln Park area, which joins an elementary school, the Thomas O'Brien Elementary School, from which I'm a graduate myself as a child. I have some wonderful memories attending that school. This project is to build this treatment facility, which there is complete agreement across the board is needed because of the aging structure of the current sewer system in the city. However, because the public was not involved in this process from the outset, now mind you, this is a capstone project. And it's my understanding this project started around 2001 and 2002. There were many stakeholders involved in this process, primarily from what the records that I've reviewed and that we've been reviewing, it appears there were primarily administrative officials. There were no community advisory input.
Ms. Freeman, you have one minute left.
Not from the neighborhood associations. And sadly, and I'm going to direct this comment to my common council representative Kathy Fahy. And it's very disheartening because I've attended several neighborhood association meetings. I've advocated with you on other issues such as stop sign issues in our community, yet no one was made aware of this project. The bottom line is, this is not the correct place for the placement of this project. I'm asking that it be tabled so that the community has an opportunity to obtain further input, whether it means obtaining additional sources, giving their input. This is a project, if it goes through, will have a long-term legacy and impact. And the health risk, whether it's chemical exposures, explosions from human error for the operation...
Your time is up, Ms. Freeman.
...it far outweighs the benefits. So again, I beg you, please do the right thing. Table it. If you can't table it, vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can a Clerk please call the next speaker?
Danielle Hill.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Danielle Hill. I reside in the Mansion neighborhood. Two things that I'd like to discuss. One would be the vote on the Beaver Creek project, the Beaver Creek trunk sewer project. If you haven't attended one of the meetings, one of the forums, now that we've got more forums coming up, please, I urge you to attend them. It's a very complicated issue. I understand that there is a problem. I'm not prepared to say that I agree with this as a solution. And a lot of the community also feels that way. I also have to reinforce what was already said that we, the community feels like they were very left out of the process and that's not appropriate. You know, there's some things that have now become, the water department now... You know, there's some things that have now become, the, the Water Department now says are committed to after hearing from the community that they should have been committed to from the beginning and had community been appropriately involved in that, particularly the communities downhill. From the proposed site, I think that we would be in a difference, a different situation right now. So, please, there's, he'll be speaking at the, the board, the, excuse me, the school board on the 17th at the Montessori School, and then at a community forum on Saturday the 19th at 4:00 PM at Grant Street Community Arts at the corner of Madison and Grand. Secondly, I, I just, you know, want to request your support on the, the Commission on Prosecutorial Conduct Bill. You know, prosecutors' job is to ensure that the public reelects them, and that's usually done through being what the public considers tough on crime. Because of this is the stance that they generally take, their interpretation and their application of the law changes with the change of the community, and there are many instances where it's not applied appropriately. You know, if you look at the, the data that's available there, between the nineteen, the earlier nineteen hundreds and 2014, inmates have spent over nineteen hundred years in prison for crimes they didn't commit, many of which were the cause of prosecutorial misconduct. You know, this could, we, we found that the, the Commission on Judicial Conduct has worked well. It wasn't the big horrible thing that the judges felt it would be. It's addressed issues with judges, people are human, you know, they're, but they need to be accounted, held accountable for the actions that they take. So, I think it's really important that you guys support that, that commission. You know, it's one more way to ensure that justice really is fair. And let's face it, it hasn't been fair for black and brown people in a long time, so let's put something in place to make it a little bit more fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker? So, seeing there's no other speaker signed up, public comment period is now closed. Let's move to the approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the approval of minutes be equal to sixty?
Can we get a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Meeting, approval of previous meeting minutes approved. Moving on to reports of standing committees. Any reports of standing committees? Mr. O'Brien.
The General Services Committee will meet on May 16th to receive a report from the Department of General Services, from General Glebelhaus, Frank Cioli, and the consulting engineers involved with solid waste management planning process. That's the 16th at 5:30.
Thank you. Ms. Prills. Did you have your hand up? Ms. Prills? No, no problem.
Last name, right?
I know, I'm going to, I promise.
The Public Safety Committee met this evening to talk about Resolution Number 184218R, referring to prosecutorial oversight, and that legislation passed out of committee with a favorable recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Igo. Thank you. Any other reports on standing committees? Seeing none? Any reports on ad hoc committee? Ms. Prills.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to acknowledge that the PEG Ad Hoc Committee will be meeting this week to review and discuss some of the applic, not some, but all of the applications that came in from community members. Since we do have the vacancies on the board, I also want to clarify a few things. The Oversight Board met a few weeks ago, they, there was a strategic planning meeting that was, was held where they talked about their strategic goals and the way forward for that body, and it was a very productive meeting. The issue of the studio being closed, I want to clarify that the reason that that studio has been closed is because the library made it very clear that until the city of Albany signed an agreement with the library, no one was to enter the studio. The reason for that being, there was misconduct in the studio by members, some of whom are in this room this evening, who were not behaving in accordance with the rules and regulations of the library, and as a result, they felt that the studio needed to be closed until there was an agreement reached on how people should conduct themselves, how the public should conduct themselves in the library space. And so, I want to clarify again that the studio has not been closed because council members haven't voted on it, because the Oversight Board has fallen asleep behind the wheel. It was really a decision that was reached by the library, and they were not going to move forward until an agreement was, a formal agreement was agreed upon between the library and the city. I also want to point out that there was a member who was unable to be at the last Oversight meeting because, and he wanted me to clarify, as he will do so at another time, his wife has cancer, and he clarified that he is often at every meeting, and this one particular meeting, he was not able to be at because he was dealing with matters with his wife, and he wanted the public to be respectful of the fact that there are times in which members cannot be at meetings. So, I wanted to publicly state that, and that member, at the appropriate time, will also make that statement. The other thing I want to point out is that the Oversight Board has had some successes. One, they have hired a new studio coordinator, and second, they were able to get the MOU between the library and the city signed. Those were two major hiccups or things that were delaying things moving forward, but those things have been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I missed the boat earlier. I just wanted to say that the Planning and Economic Development Committee met on April 18th for a member of the IDA and CRC Board and put forth the name of Jaheen Hope, Jaquine Hope with a positive recommendation. And the Planning and Economic Development Committee also met on April 25th and 26th to interview members of, for the Sustainability Committee and put forth with a positive recommendation the names of Daniel Kirk Davidoff, Andre Lake, and Tina Lieberman. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to considerations of ordinances, ordinance introduced. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice the introduction ordinance, 295118.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Albany by enacting the chapter 151 to be entitled conversion therapy prohibition.
Mr. Conti. Mr. Conti. Oh, this is Igo? Mr. Igo, sorry. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Part II of Article, Article 11 of Chapter 133 of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the vacant building registry.
Mr. Conti. All those in favor? Those opposed? Abstentions? Can a clerk please read the ordinance? Sorry. Ms. Duchesne.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 31.51.18 for introduction.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing settlement of claim against the city of Albany in New York at a maximum cost of $625,000, and authorizing the issuance of $625,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
Thank you. Moving to ordinance since held. Mr. Conti. Yes. Ms. Love. Okay. We'll do, we'll do a roll call voice, voice vote on this one and the next two, so we don't have to go individual. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
An ordinance of the Common Council authorizing the sale to Olina, Olina Lake, a city-owned vacant lot at 214 Spruce Street.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Ordinance passes. Ms. Love. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the Common Council authorizing the sale to Habitat for Humanity Capital District Incorporated of a city-owned vacant lot at 245 Orange Street.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, we'll do another voice vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? None of those opposed, ordinance passes. Moving on to resolutions introduced. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 235118R and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the transfer of funds will affect the salary total in the Department of Administrative Services for the 2018 budget.
Any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Duchesne.
Yes, I would just like to reiterate some of the reasons why I'm opposed to this that I had stated in caucus. First and foremost, as Chair of the Finance Committee, I'm painfully aware of the fact that we got a half million dollars less in capital city funding this year than is in our 2018 budget, and that along with the failure of the Queeman's property sale to go through has left us starting out with over a million dollars in the hole. On that basis, I think that it is prudent that if we are going to be approving new positions, that we be asking departments, as we tend to do all along, to find the savings within their own departments so that there is not increased costs associated with this. In this particular case, we're taking money out of the contingency fund. With this, we will have depleted the fund by half. $400,000 is not a lot to start with. This brings us down to $200,000 in that fund, and with us being $1.1 million in the hole compared to what we passed as budget in terms of the revenue we anticipated, I don't know how we're going to make that up and then have this additional funding for this particular position. This particular position will also, along with the MWBE, be baked into next year's budget. We're hiring people on a permanent basis. That's $150,000 when you count the salary and likely benefits that we will be paying for that. That equates to a quarter percent tax increase. So, approving this along with, if you voted for the MWBE, that's a quarter percent tax increase that you're voting for. Additionally, I have noted that while I understand that there are frustrations and people feel overworked, that's true of people in many places within the city. We have, and, and there's also a desire to compensate people higher. We had extensive conversations last year regarding the treasurer and his desire to take $30,000 from his salary just so he could fund some additional raises, so he could retain qualified staff in positions, and he's fearful of losing those positions. I don't know why we're approving this complete new position to double the staff taking care of civil service when we did not take care of providing increases for those individuals. We have people, we just lost David Gonzalez in the Law Department, extremely qualified individual who has gone to work for the state. Perhaps if we had, have increased the salaries in our Corporation Counsel's Office to be more equivalent with what state attorneys are being paid, we might be able to preserve those positions. The, there's also, we're negotiating raises with unions, and I think that this diminishes our credibility when we say we don't have the money at the bargaining table. This equates to, for the unionized police office, the entire force, equates to a half a percentage raise this year, probably even more considering we're partially through the year if we were to settle a contract at this particular point in time. I'm just concerned that sometimes we need to make tough decisions and say no to additional expenditures. We are doing that default for many departments by not addressing some of their very critical needs, and we're do, not doing that partially because we have a $1.1 million hole in our budget right now that I don't have any idea how we're going to make that up. So, for those reasons, I just feel like we do not have the money to be adding additional staff in a department that this, along with the other one that was approved last month, essentially increases their staff by 10% this year, increases staff salaries by 10% after the adoption of the 2018 budget. It's actually a 20% increase in staff salaries because of the amount of increase that we provided in the 2018 budget when we considered that. Again, I understand the critical need, and I wish we had the funding, but I don't think we do.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call a roll? Mr. Nane.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Claris.
Yes.
Mr. Baller. Mr. Conti. Ms. O'Shea.
No.
Ms. Fahey. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hoey. Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Abstain.
Twelve affirmative, two negative, one abstain? Resolution passes. Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 245118R for introduction and a roll call vote for passage.
On this one, we will also be asking for a vote, a voice vote instead of a roll call vote. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council appointing Jaquine Hope as a member of the City of Albany Industrial Development Agency.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 255118R, ask for its introduction and a vote on it, please.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Fahey. Also, we'll be doing this on a voice vote as well. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council appointing Daniel Kirk Davidoff as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Yes, Mr. Conti is co-sponsor. And if any members would like to be co-sponsors on any of these, just let the clerk know.
Same. Co-sponsor Jaquine.
Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 265118R, ask for its passage. Ask for its passage and a vote, please.
We'll also be doing a ro, a voice vote on this one. Mr., can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council appointing Andre Lake as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Any discussion on the resolution? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kimbrough would like to co-sponsor. Those opposed? Resolution passes. Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution twenty-seven fifty-one eighteen R. Ask for its introduction and passage.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. We'll be doing a voice vote on this as well. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council appointing Tina Lieberman as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Any discussion on the resolution? Mr. Igo would like to co-sponsor? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes. Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution twenty-eight fifty-one eighteen R and ask for its introduction.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council authorizing the mayor to execute a home rule request for the alienation of a portion of Lincoln Park.
Thank you. Ms. Fahey? You have the last resolution, you have the last resolution.
Oh, yes, okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution twenty-nine fifty-one eighteen R. Ask for its introduction and passage.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council making a home rule request to allow alienation of a portion of Lincoln Park for the Big C Disinfection and Flotables Control Facility and associated infrastructure as part of the Albany Pool Community's Long-Term Control Plan and Beaver Creek Clean River Project.
Is there a discussion on the resolution?
I just wanted to know that there was a change in title from what you read, so that the term home rule is not included?
So what?
The term home rule is not included in resolution twenty-eight fifty-one eighteen R. And twenty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind people that, that this resolution just begins the parkland alienation process. It's a very long, involved process, and we do have to receive permission from the state. A bill will be introduced in the state legislature to begin this process, and people, the public will have an opportunity to have input in this process because anytime you talk about alienating parkland, it's a serious topic that is looked at very carefully. So people will have an opportunity for input on this, but this just gets the process going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Mr. Conti.
These revisions, we take out the reference to this being a home rule request, and also we take out language indicating request of introduction and passage. So that all this resolution does is ask for the introduction of legislation that event from subject to the labor vote, a home rule, if it is introduced as a council would have been. So this is just a version option, trying to forward on keeping on that where there's several votes that should happen before alienation actually would happen, but this is not necessarily a request, the introduction of legislation that we can consider.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. Ballerin.
I know this is just the beginning of the process, and I understand that, and I also know that this is gonna be a long process, and I think the public deserves to hear why we vote the way we vote. I attended the meeting three weeks ago, or two weeks ago at school where they showed how all the pipelines were going through this section, and it finally dawned on me what I had read a few weeks before that about a new building that's coming up in my district. And when I read the sewer report, it all said it was going, it's gonna be linked to the Beaver Gle, Beaver, Beaver Gleek section, and I really didn't understand that, so I just kept going. But when I saw that diagram, it really hit how our infrastructure is very outdated. It was designed in a time where we thought that our pollution going into the Hudson wasn't a problem, and unfortunately for that, we are the generation that has to correct it. And part of that is making some tough choices. Part of my concern why I attended the school meeting is because I'm also looking at starting family, and I'm thinking my kids might be going to this school in a couple of years, and I want to make sure that we create a system that is safe for our next generation. I, I'm optimistic that we can do that. I'm glad that the commission has been willing to move forward with the advisory committee that was brought up at that meeting. I think that's the first step. Part of the reason people are so upset is because they felt that maybe they weren't a part of the process. So hopefully, we can correct that. We can make sure people feel they're a part of the process so that people don't see this as a negative effect on their community, but something that can be a positive in the long term. So I felt it's important to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballerin. Mr. Johnson.
I just wanted to say that this was a teachable moment. If you listen to the community, the community feels strongly about being informed at this, about this at the last moment, at the last minute, and as a council person, as the voice of the community, I feel like, you know, I walked into kind of a, a ready-set deal when it was explained to me, you know, it was, it was very, like, it was at the last minute. In fact, when I left the meeting, you know, I, I asked one question, and when I was talking to the constituents, they were looking for the answer that I received in the hearings, and I think they had three meetings and they still haven't heard a clear answer that they're looking for. So I just think that it's important that we get the community involved in big projects like this because it's important that their verse, their voice be heard, and it's an awkward position to be in to explain something that you're just finding out about, you know, and, and try to make sure people feel like their concerns are heard. So I will hope that we will learn from all of these meetings that we've been holding big issues like this because the community deserves to know and deserves to have input. So I would like to, to state that for the record.
Is there any more discussion before I let Ms., because once Ms. Fahey speaks, it's her resolution, no one else can speak. Okay. Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's, this whole process, I understand it is very important that the public be part of the process, and I think, I have to say honestly, I do believe that that was the attention right from the very beginning here. The engineers put forth this idea, a well-thought-out idea, but right from the very start, they were committed to meeting with the public, meeting with the community, and getting their input, and, you know, they've made, they've already made significant, you know, looked at things differently, for example, the parkland alienation process, as that was brought up by our former council member Dominic Calzolero. The advisory committee, I mean, absolutely, they, they got on board with that, so, you know, I've attended all but one meeting. I didn't get down to the one at a village, and my impression was that the administration really took every effort to try to understand residents' concerns about this process, and they're still open to that. So, you know, for folks who, who think this is a done deal, it's not. We are looking for the best solution to what is a very serious problem, pollution in the Hudson, but also our water sewer infrastructure that is so incredibly outdated. And I, I'd also want to speak just from the point of view of the folks I represent in that immediate area, area. Those of you who haven't attended any of these meetings may not know this, but that ravine near where we're talking about, near toast, can be like a cesspool at different points in the year after a heavy storm, and I have, I have many constituents who have complained to me over the years about the, about the smell and the headaches that they would get from the, from the overflow. There's also a sink, a large sinkhole at the top of the ravine. It is fenced in, yes it is. It has sat there for many years. We have tons of kids who go up and down the sidewalk nearby. To me, it's hazardous for those, for those kids because they really could be hurt if they climb the fence into that area. We also have, in the ravine, we have, I was just over there the other day because we had a cleanup in that, in this neighborhood. Looking down in the ravine, we have homeless folks, there's a homeless encampment there. Every single year, I had some people, I talked to this past Saturday, they talked about public safety issues, you know, they have a teenage daughter, they don't want her walking near there, they're concerned. So there's a lot of other issues here, but again, just want to emphasize this, this resolution here tonight is the beginning of a process, this parkland alienation process. I think these are some, we have to, I give the administration a lot of credit, we are remediating a very important problem, a very significant problem in our, our neighborhood. As far as notification of the community, I think it's extremely important that we do our best to get the word out. There's, I think, a couple of more meetings coming up, and I, I think we gave the dates earlier for those, and I know the administration is open to additional meetings. So I, I hope you'll all consider supporting this process as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. Can a clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Onani.
Yes.
Mr. Claris.
Yes.
Mr. Ballerin.
Yeah.
Mr. Conti. Mr. O'Shea. Ms. Fahey. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Howie. Mr. Igo. Mr. Kimbrough. Mr. Johnson. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative?
Resolution passes. Mr. Conti. Resolution's held.
Mr. President, the resolution's held. I am one in spell, and the other, so we recognize the sponsors.
Thank you. Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution sixteen forty-two eighteen R. Ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please, on this resolution, we will do the final four, we'll do voice votes on all of them. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council confirming the.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes. Mr. Igo, co-sponsor? Mr. Howie?
Co-sponsor.
Mr. O'Brien? Mr. Onani? Ms. Dushay? Ms. Aprils? Mr. Ballerin? Mr. Flynn? Mr. All of them raised their hand, Mr. Flynn and Ms. Farrell. They all didn't raise their hand? Mr. Igo? Oh, Mr. Conti? Mr. Igo?
President, I notice the resolution seventeen forty-two eighteen R for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council confirming the appointment of William J. Kelly at Corporation Council.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Mr. Conti likes, co-sponsor?
Co-sponsor.
All co-sponsors. Seeing no discussion on the resolution, all those in favor? Those opposed? Resolution passes. Congratulations, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Aprils.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to recognize resolution eighteen forty-two eighteen R and request its reading and passage.
Yes, isn't that with amendment as well? I believe it's with amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution calling on New York State Legislature to pass legislation creating a state commission on prosecutorial conduct.
Any discussion on the resolution? Mr. Conti would like co-sponsor?
Co-sponsor.
See all the co-sponsors?
Co-sponsor.
Everybody co-sponsor. Let's just make it a family gathering. Everybody co-sponsor. Any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Aprils.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I don't want to beat a dead horse. I want to thank the council members, a part of the Public Safety Committee, for their consideration and their vote tonight, and also members of the public who came out to talk about their personal, the personal impact of this legislation on their lives, in particular the Bizarra family, as you heard from, and then also Mr. H. Bosch who could not stay tonight because we had an extended caucus, but he came to talk about his own personal experience of being accused of setting his own home on fire and just being thankful that he had the finances to fight the criminal justice system in a way that most people do not. You know, this is a criminal just, one of the biggest civil rights issues of our time, and most people are scratching their heads trying to figure out what can they do to dismantle a system that is really built on the backs of black and brown people predominantly, and so this is one tool that we have at our disposal, and that is really urging the state legislature to pass this, this legislation that would require the creation of this body to provide oversight to our prosecutors in the state of New York. We've talked about the financial implications of lawsuits due to misconducts. I don't want to beat that dead horse, but I want to particularly highlight the costs to families and communities that takes place when there is this level of misconduct. So with that, I appreciate all of the support for this legislation. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passed. Ms. Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution twenty-one forty-two eighteen R. Ask for its passage.
Resolution of the common council confirming the appointment of Christopher Hacker as a member of the Historic Resources Commission.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer a list of names or unnamed for appointment as Commissioner of Deeds. I ask for its passage and waive the reading of the names.
Do we have a second? All those in favor? Commissioner of Deeds passes. Ms. Lanias?
I just wanted to mention on Thursday, last Friday, we lost Officer Martin of the Albany Police tragically. He was battling cancer and tragically died within three weeks of his illness, so the funeral is gonna be Thursday morning, and the wake is Wednesday night at the Palace.
Thank you. Mr. Igo?
I'd like to remind everybody that tomorrow is the Police Memorial Parade, and the mass is at ten-thirty, and around eleven-thirty it should be over with, and we're dedicating the street next to St. Mary's as Father of the Fever Way. So if anybody's around, he did serve the community and the police department for over fifty years. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Just want to highlight the sign-on letter that was circulated about David Clark, the former sheriff for Milwaukee, who will be speaking in Albany on Wednesday, and this letter just basically reiterates the point that council members do not support his racially-charged rhetoric and the treatment of inmates and people in Milwaukee. I have so far signatures from Councilmember Robinson, Flynn, O'Brien, Farrell, Igo, and Doshet, so if anyone is interested, let me know. Okay, Conti? I emailed it out today, and it's going to be sent out tomorrow, so just let Michelle know before you leave tonight if you want to sign on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
Mr. President, if there's more for this, I hope we, maybe the chair of this side or the memory of Officer Martin.